I'd like to call the July 11, 2013, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Here.
And Mr. Foster.
Here.
First order of business today is council minutes for the meetings of June 10 and June 13, 2013. Do I have any additions or corrections? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve the minutes of the June 10 and June 13, 2013 meetings.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next order of business is matters of special privilege, and today we do have an excellence in service to Williamsburg award, and this is going to be presented to Deputy Commissioner of Revenue Phyllis Rosen. This is a special award because it's a recognition by peers of the excellent performance of someone. So, Phyllis, if you would meet me at the front here, we have a proclamation for you and a plaque. I'll read the proclamation and the plaque, and then you can say something.
Okay.
The city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Phyllis M. Rosen for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Phyllis M. Rosen has faithfully and effectively served the Williamsburg public for 20 years. As Deputy Commissioner of Revenue, Mrs. Rosen has is responsible for all aspects of personal property tax administration, including assisting residents with vehicle registration, setting up the personal property tax book, and preparing and printing tax bills. She issues business licenses, processes state income taxes, and remits various reports to the Commonwealth. She coordinates closely with the Finance Department and the Treasurer's Office. When working under stress, she always maintains a pleasant disposition and consistently provides fair and caring problem-solving for our residents. She arrives early each day, bringing her very best to the workplace. Her genuinely upbeat and caring attitude results in superior customer service and effective teamwork. She has been a leader in the Walking Club Committee of the city's Health and Wellness Task Force, setting a personal example for coworkers. As an exceptional employee and representative of the city, Phyllis M. Rosen is hereby recognized for her dedication to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg dated today, July 11, 2013, signed by Mia as Mayor and Jack Tuttle as City Manager. Phyllis, congratulations. Well done. So, I have a plaque for you to put right at your workplace so everybody can realize what an asset you are to the city.
It's amazing when you hear it in words, what you do. Thank you, everybody. It wouldn't be for all of you that I'm this way. You all are so great. You always welcome me. You always just always make me feel at home. So, thank you so much. It's really an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
In addition, I have several other recognitions that I'd like to make today. There are two city employees who received awards for excellence at the June Peninsula Crime Line Awards Ceremony. Police investigator Lang Craighill was the recipient of the Peninsula Crime Line 2013 Salute to Law Enforcement Award for his work on a cold case identifying and leading to the arrest of a decade-old rape and abduction suspect through the use of DNA and excellent police work. In addition, city attorney Christina Sheldon received the 2013 Peninsula Crime Line Salute to Law Enforcement Civilian Award for her efforts to protect some of the city's most vulnerable citizens, its children. In working with the courts and local community partners, she has been instrumental in protecting children from harm and neglect by creating safer environments and providing support to at-risk families. Finally, the city received an award from NerdWallet, a consumer advocacy website based in San Francisco, and recognized Williamsburg for its commitment to environmental responsibility and sustainability as one of the 10 most innovative green cities in the country with successful green initiatives that involve the whole community. They highlighted the importance of the Green Team led by Assistant Manager Jody Miller, as well as the commitment of businesses and residents. So, a good month for the city of Williamsburg, and congratulations to Lang, to Christina, and to Jody and the Green Team. So, thank you very much. Our next order of business is public hearings, and we have two today. The first is a 2013 Comprehensive Plan Implementation, and this is miscellaneous changes proposed ordinances 13-23 to 13-27. Mr. Nestor, you're up.
This will be our fourth round of Comprehensive Plan Implementation changes, and other than this, the only remaining big item we have are the Design Review Guidelines, which will be before council in October. These cases today are miscellaneous changes, not tied down a particular planning area to implement our plan that was adopted in January of this year. The first pertains to changes in the RS2 districts in the city, and they're highlighted in blue on the map. The plan recommends two changes to bring the zoning regulations into agreement with the medium-density, single-family detached residential land use category, which has a maximum residential density of five dwelling units per acre. The first, PCR 13-19, is to revise the cluster subdivision requirements in the RS2 district to reduce the maximum density for single-family cluster subdivisions from six to five dwelling units per net acre clusters. This would require approval by a special use permit, so this would comply with the five-unit-per-net-acre density in our plan. The second case, PCR 13-20, would revise the density requirements for PDR Plan Development Residential Districts to reduce the maximum density allowed when rezoning from an RS2 district from six to five dwelling units per net acre. Again, this just brings the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan into agreement. And this really applies to three-to-five-acre parcels in the RS2 districts, and I've identified with stars the large parcels we have in those districts, the largest being the portion of the Riverside Development north of Tutter's Neck Pond. The next two cases deal with the City College Land Exchange property, land property exchange that was done in 1996. The city received acreage on South Henry Street across from Port Ann and wrapping around the Eastern State Cemetery. This is designated Conservation Area and sensitive environmental land use. It's the future location of the Paper Mill Creek Passive Park. It's also the Paper Mill Creek Conservation Area, which is one of our two Regional Reserve Open Space Areas for Chesapeake Bay credits. So, the land exchange put restrictive covenants on the property. The Paper Mill Creek Conservation Area puts restrictive covenants on the property, which essentially limits the use of this property to passive recreational use. It's proposed to rezone from the William &amp; Mary District to RS1, our most restrictive single-family residential district. Parks are allowed by right. Lighted ball fields would require special use permits. So, this is consistent with the use that the Comprehensive Plan proposes, and there is no plan by rezoning it to RS1 to promote a residential development on the property. In fact, that is not allowed because of the covenants on the property. And this is the boundaries of the rezoning on an aerial photograph. The companion piece of property was the land behind and to the southeast of Berkeley Middle School. That's the property that the College of William &amp; Mary got from us. Again, there are restrictive covenants on the use of the property, but since the college owns it, this would change the zoning from RS2 to William &amp; Mary District, and this essentially designates the William &amp; Mary property on our zoning ordinance because being William &amp; Mary property, it's not subject to our zoning regulations. But this, again, like the two previous changes, these bring our zoning map into accordance with this future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan, and this is the wooded area that is in this zoning change. The next change deals with our archaeological review districts. It's proposed to expand these districts. These were first recommended in our 1989 Comprehensive Plan. They were added, what you see on this map, were added to the zoning ordinance in 1995. Five districts were initially designated. And here is the proposed expansion primarily to the south. These districts were established to ensure that archaeological resources in the city are studied and based on the findings of the study. Significant resources are either preserved or recovered through a resource management plan. We reevaluated these areas during the Comprehensive Plan preparation with assistance from Colonial Williamsburg Department of Architectural and Archaeological Research, and these are the new districts that are recommended. Just going back, you can see we're adding five, the Southern Williamsburg Resource Area, we're expanding this area. This is called the College Landing Resource Area now. You can see originally it was primarily around College Landing Park and the Colonial College Landing Settlement. That includes our other Chesapeake Bay Regional Reserve Open Space Area. We've added the old Jamestown Road Trace Area. This is property owned by the college. We eliminated a small lot in Phase One of Holly Hills. The archaeological salvage work has been done on that lot, so there was no reason to keep that, and we're expanding the Capital Landing Resource Area just a little bit to the south that you can see there. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on these requests last month, and the Planning Commission recommends to City Council by a vote of 4-0 that these five changes implementing the recommendations of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan be approved.
Great. Thank you very much, Reed. I'll now come back to council for any questions before I open the public hearing.
Reed, with the expansion of that Architecture Protection District, what comes along with that? Is that an extra step in permitting process that you have to comply with an architectural survey?
Yes, there could be specific archaeological studies required, for example, when the Queen Mary's Port subdivision was reviewed. They did a Phase One archaeological survey, which led to a Phase Two archaeological survey because of the importance of that site. In looking at any individual proposal, you know, there's a lot of architectural surveys that have been done. In some cases, a determination would be made that no further work needs to be done. In some cases, there would need to be a Phase One study done, which does involve some field work, and that would be the end of it. In other cases, there are significant resources found which could lead to a Phase Three or a Phase Two or Phase Three studies, but there would most likely need to be some additional work involved to investigate those resources.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, can you go to the previous screen? Area four seems to include a portion of a lot, if you will, on the east side of Quarter Path, and then but on the next slide there, it doesn't include. Is that that portion right there?
That the portion, I think you're referring to this area here, that's the Colonial, whoops, that's the Colonial Williamsburg Nursery. When we tried, for the most part, to make these boundary lines follow property lines or physical features, so what we did here, this area six includes Reed Outt Park, and then area five follows a stream down here and follows property lines, whereas the previous area was just a box going around.
And so, that answers the question, but do you deem that there's probably nothing in that area that would warrant this type of scrutiny if for one day the nursery went away and they wanted to develop it?
Yes.
Okay. Should it be, so it should not be included, you think?
No, we're satisfied with the boundaries that we have here.
Thank you. Reed, I have one question for you on the new map. Area six includes Reed Outt Park and that area, is that correct?
Correct.
Was there a reason for not extending that to the east? Because that sort of cut below there was where the Confederate counterattack came. Is there a reason to extend it into that area or not?
The, there have been other archaeological surveys of the Colonial Williamsburg property, and we felt that with survey work that has already been done and the fact that the Quarter Path at Williamsburg Riverside property rezonings were done based on the original archaeological boundaries, that we did not need to extend that to cover that problem.
Thank you. Any other questions before I go to the public hearing? Thank you very much, Reed. With that, I'll open the public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak to any of the proposed changes, please come forward, state your name and address. Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing, come back to council for discussion and action.
Were you asking about extending this slightly more strenuous architectural view into what has yet to be developed on the east side of Reed Outt Park?
Right.
That seems to make sense to me because because there's.
Well, again, I take, Reed, would you like to come up and address that again? I mean, there certainly was, that's part of where the Battle of Williamsburg took place, but there have been archaeological studies.
There have been archaeological studies in the past.
Are you, are you comfortable with that they've been sufficient to?
I mean, we did not feel that this, there needed to be any further area involved in the archaeological district. Plus, I believe if we wanted to expand the areas beyond what we show on the map, and this has been part of the case that's been advertised, we would have to go back through the process again and re-advertize it.
If I may, you know, we've gotten a lot of communications from some Civil War enthusiasts who believe that there's more there than has been identified through some of the research to date. You know, the Battle of Williamsburg is right there. Bloody Ravine is just beyond in that section, and so I take you for your point, Reed, that you're satisfied.
Well, I'm wondering if, you know, we might go ahead and approve this today, but ask the Planning Commission and Reed to go back and rethink sort of that, whether it's worth extending that and have a more substantive discussion and about whether it would be worth extending it sort of to cover what remains in the city of the Battle of Williamsburg site. Would that be acceptable?
Wouldn't the step be to go back to the archaeological surveys that have already been done and get an evaluation from the experts in the field to find out what they've determined and why?
Right. Yeah, and I assume that's what Planning Commission would do before they came back to us.
I'm not saying they shouldn't do it. I just almost wonder if it's not something that could just begin at the staff level and then have Reed just come back with a more in-depth explanation of what has been considered. Before we send the Planning Commission through a whole other process where the question may already exist.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't mean to imply that they necessarily need to. I want them to look at the question, not necessarily bring us back something. I'll leave it up to their determination. But again, I've heard, like all of us, I think, have heard, and as Doug said, heard from a number of people about the importance of this area and what have you, so I think we just need to be extra careful as we deal with it.
Well, and I think to the point, if we're going to do something, I think we ought to do it, but I don't know what that "it" is yet, and maybe to Paul's point, I think staff has already done just that. They've looked at the documents. They feel comfortable with this recommendation. Planning Commission does as well. And so, I think either we take that and approve it, and if there is a next step, we have to pretty well clearly define that. Do we want to engage other people in this process? You know, what kind of answers are we looking to get?
I would like to know the answer. As Riverside develops, what permitting process, what studies have to be done, given where we are?
Sure.
You know, and I think some of the fears that have been communicated to me is, you know, and I'm not saying this is true, but they say that, well, you know, developers are interested in developing, and so they're going to find as little as possible, and that's the information we're going to hear. Those that feel there's more there that's not being uncovered, you know, have a different opinion, and so how do we reconcile that? Because if there is something significant there, I think there's, and we've got a long history as a city of protecting our history, and this is an important part of American history.
We really are enabling the development or have enabled the development of that piece of property. So, you know, knowing as much as we can while that happens is really, I think, is our due diligence.
Satisfied that, you know, with, I mean, you have looked at it. Is it, I guess our question is, is it worth taking another look at what's there? And if you, as a result of that second look, if you've come back and think that something needs to be done, then bring it back to us. If not, report back to us.
Can I just ask Mr. Tuttle a question?
Yeah.
Do you mind, as somebody who's somewhat of a Civil War aficionado or historian, in your knowledge of this property, can you add something to the conversation about what has taken place there and to what extent they've surveyed the property?
The survey work was done by Riverside at the time of the purchase from Colonial Williamsburg and coming forward, and so there wasn't anything significant that came out of that survey with regard to the Civil War activity on it. What we do know that that piece of property labeled as six on there, which is essentially Reed Outt Park, that between Reed Outt Number Two, which is right at the northern tip of that, right there, and the next Reed Outt off the way, which was Number Three, which is on the present side of the current hotel that we call Fort McGruder, not the Fort McGruder of the original Fort McGruder, that that was where the Confederate counterattack, as the mayor mentioned, swept down the ravine towards the Bloody Ravine. And Reed, if you want to point that out, there you go. Not up there, but straight up to the north and into, no.
Towards 60.
Exactly. That line, that line, and really extending up beyond, right over where the railroad tracks are today, was the area that was, we know is the Bloody Ravine, with the hotel sitting right at the bottom of it. And so, there was a battle that occurred there, but there wasn't an encampment there. So, there, what you would find there, if you were fortunate enough, would be anything that might have been discarded, left on the battlefield, and from that, in about one, four, or five-hour period of fighting, you know, through that day, however long it was, on the day of May 5, 1862. So, and that's very different from a campsite where things might accumulate over time. So, the fact that things weren't found there is, although there have certainly been non-professionals that have, you know, that have, over the years, found certain relics there, which you would expect to find, but no foundations, no structures, that type of thing. So, that's an important site. How important it is archaeologically is another question. Does that make sense?
Well, I would be comfortable moving forward with approving this, just asking the question of, is it worth taking a second look? Counsel, come to that. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion. Joe, is it possible, we can do these all in one motion, or do we need to do them separately?
You can do them all in one motion. On the other hand, since you're going to have a condition relative to the one, you might want to take three in one and the other separately, however you want to do it.
I'll start with a bigger motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt proposed ordinance 13-23, revise the RS2 district to reduce cluster subdivision density from six to five dwelling units per net acre. Proposed ordinance 13-24, revise the PDR district to reduce residential density from six to five dwelling units per net acre when rezoning from RS2 district. Proposed ordinance 13-25, rezoning 36.8 acres at 951 South Henry Street from WM to RS1. And proposed ordinance 13-26, rezoning 36.8 acres at 190 Strawberry Plains Road from RS2 to WM.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well done. Our next public hearing is PCR 13-24, revise security payments for private signs in public right-of-ways. This is proposed ordinance 13-28. Mr. Nestor.
Section 21-749.1 of the zoning ordinance sign regulations establishes provisions for placing private signs on public right-of-way. And this was done primarily to address issues where the right-of-way was really wide and it wasn't possible for business to put a sign right behind the curb or the sidewalk like is usually the case. To do this, City Council approval is required, as well as maintenance of an insurance policy and providing a security payment, which could be a bond, letter of credit, or certified check to cover the cost of removing the sign. And you have a copy of this section. Since this section was established in November of 2000, council has approved, have approved eight signs to be located in the public right-of-way. And I have slides showing these signs, Second Street Fistro, that replay, that was one sign. Beach House. check to cover the cost of removing the sign. And you have a copy of this section. Since this section was established in November of 2000, council has approved, have approved eight signs to be located in the public right-ofway. And I have slides showing these signs. Second Street Fistro, that replay, that was one sign. Beach House Grill was the first sign for this building that was replaced by South of the Border Restaurant. Both of these are on Second Street. On Capital Landing Road, Country Hearth Inn and Suites, the Colonel Waller Motel sign, that was approved, but that was, the new sign was never erected. Capital Landing Center, which is a shopping center by DMV, just up the street from the Colonial Hearth Inn and Suites. Parkway Apartments on Merrimack Trail, and there was a sign approved for Quality Suites on Richmond Road, and that's been removed since that property has become city loss. So those are the signs that we have existing now. There was a request from a Williamsburg business owner to change, to change the provisions of the ordinance to allow a waiver of that deposit or letter of credit if certain conditions were met. That led to a memorandum from the city manager to Planning Commission to consider amending the ordinance. Planning Commission held a public hearing on that last month. This would have added a provision that says the surety, letter, credit, or certified check may be released with the approval of the city manager if the sign has been in place for 10 or more years with no change in ownership of the business. In making a determination, the city manager shall consider any codes compliance, zoning, property maintenance, or other violations of city or state code that have occurred pertaining to the sign, or any other actions that have been taken by the city to terminate the sign permit doing during the 10-year period. So this is not a mandatory thing that says that deposit is eliminated after 10 years. It may be eliminated based on a specific request to the city manager. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this on June 19th, and they had a tie vote, two to two. The motion was to approve the request. So their motion failed on the tie vote, and the Planning Commission has no recommendation for City Council. So council needs to decide, absent a Planning Commission recommendation, whether or not this change should be made to the zoning ordinance text.
Thank you very much, Reed. Let me come back to council for any questions before I open the hearing. Any questions?
May I? Mr. Nestor. In none of the pictures that you showed, did I get the sense that these signs were intruding really in any way into the right-ofway? So in some cases, there's still, like here, Parkway Apartments, you look at how far back that is from the edge of the road. Are these, do these tend to occur in areas where there's just an extremely wide right-ofway?
Yes, actually, I think Merrimack Trail was originally intended to be a four-lane road through there. So the right-ofway on the Parkway Apartments side, all the way along the road, is way wide. And I think the same is true on Capital Landing Road, that that was intended years and years ago to be a wider road, and the right-ofway is wide. Second Street, the further you get away from Page Street, the road steps out wider and wider and wider. So.
Can I just mention that? Because with the sign ordinances that we have that limit the size of the sign, and our effort to go to monument signs instead of pole-mounted signs, when you have these extremely large rights-of-way, it seems like it makes it even that much harder for a business to be seen. Have we had any instances where there's been a problem as a result of a sign having been located in the right-ofway?
No.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
No questions?
No. I think this seems to be a fair and balanced way to deal with this issue. And, you know, it both protects the city, but also recognizes the commitment the business has made, and that after some time period, 10 years, which is a pretty long time, that's, gives them an avenue for, you know, moving away from the bond or security they provided. So it seems to me to be a pretty balanced and equitable way to do it. With that, I'll open the public hearing. And anyone who wishes to speak to this, please come forward. State your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
This in no way affects the responsibility of a business owner or the liability if there's some sort of insurance claim related to the sign being in the public right-ofway. That's not part of the conversation. My understanding is the $1,000 is a bond to help in case that sign needs to be removed at a later date, and for some reason, the business is either unable or unwilling to do that. To me, even if a business struggles, and let's say the property gets taken over by another landlord or another owner, they're still going to have responsibility for the sign. So after a certain period of time, particularly when a business has been a contributor to the community in a significant way from tax revenue, it seems like there ought to be some flexibility there. That's just my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. I think we're all on the same page, so I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that council approve proposed ordinance 13-26. That the sign ordinance be changed to authorize the city manager to waive the security deposit for signs in a public right-ofway if certain conditions are met.
Is that 13-28?
I'm sorry, 13.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Icemea Frady.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye. Thank you. Our next order of business reports, the first of those, monthly financial statement. Jack, anything in particular?
No, we're going to have a year-end report a little later, so we can wait till then.
Okay. Any questions? Not monthly department operating reports?
I probably just mentioned one thing. Under the finance department reports, you'll notice in about the whole sixth or seventh line down, it's the line on assessment to sales ratio. There's a considerable difference between where we are this year now, as opposed to where we were a year ago at this time. Over the last year, the average of this year is that we have a 93.4% sales-to-assessment ratio, meaning that the average assessment on properties was 93% of the average actual sales on that property, indicating that our assessments are running less than what property's actually selling for. A year ago at this time, when we looked back over the prior year, it was 110% in the other direction. In other words, the properties were actually being assessed at 110% of what they were selling for. So that 16-point or so turnaround, 16% turnaround, is significant in terms of the future of real estate values and real estate taxes in the city in a positive direction.
And if I may, that's true. And yet, it only really is affected by those properties that are actually selling and changing hands. So if we have sectors or segments, price ranges within the available inventory that are selling more rapidly, that's what's being reflected here as opposed to the ones that may not be selling. So it doesn't necessarily mean that all assessments are up.
It doesn't mean a 16 percentage point shift, no.
But it's certainly good news.
But it's in the right direction, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Schedule of meetings, because we did not have a work session, that's usually where we do that. Is there anything in particular you want to point out?
Yes. And, Mr. Mayor, you might want to add a few comments on this. But on the 29th, we have scheduled a special city council meeting at 7:00 PM, a work session for the purpose of hearing the report of the Striker Center Selection Committee or Evaluation Committee that Mr. Clayton is chairing. So that would be on the 29th at 7:00, and then the following Monday, the regular August work session, that discussion and work would continue.
Right. So again, just to make sure everyone's aware, on Monday, the 29th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers, there'll be a special meeting for the purpose of receiving the report from the committee that was set up under the PPEA process. And again, that following Monday, the next Monday's work session will be devoted to a discussion of that.
Correct.
Anything else to point out?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, city manager reports, we have three. The first is the year-end financial report.
Finance Director Phil Serra will give his report.
Phil, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of City Council. Like we do every July, we're going to go through, give you a recap of how the fiscal year ended, the June 30th year ending, which was fiscal year 2013, talk about the trends, show you the graph, where we're at with that graph that you've seen many times, and show you where we are on a cash basis, and also after considering what we believe to be additional accruals on the expenditures and revenues of the general fund and the sales tax fund, which will ultimately result in the reserve, the surplus at the end of the year, which we'll also kind of estimate for you here. So we have more of a high-level review. I don't want to get too far into the weeds. We'll do that in December after the audit report's completed and really get into more detail at that point in time. This is the graph that you're used to seeing, and I just want to make a point of, this is where we are right now, June 30th. There's a gap, higher revenues than expenditures, which is a good thing at this point. And I'll get into the details on what that number actually is. Okay? As far as the operating revenues, again, on a cash basis, the budget was $32.185 million. Actual revenues collected were $32.14 million. So a gap of about $46,000 budget to actual. So we were a little under budget, again, on a cash basis. That will change with the accruals. And I'll show you here, we're going to estimate accruals. We know we have sales tax for education money coming in, utility taxes from various utility companies, and at least $100,000 of others. So a total of about $320,000 conservatively at this point will be added to those cash basis revenues. On the expenditure side, the budget for expenditures was $32.4 million for the year, and expenditures on a cash basis were just at about $31 million, so a gap of about $1.4 million under budget on the spending. All departments came in under budget. Education was right on by contract, so that's where we are on a cash basis. We do know we have to accrue expenditures over the accrual period, which is in the next 60 days. We're going to be adding in jail costs, and I'm estimating about another $450,000 in other operating costs to be added to those total expenditures for a total of $562,000. Looking at it a different way, and after considering the accruals, breaking it down by these categories here, the expenditures will be about $850,000 under budget, and most of those will relate to public safety, public assistance subsidy, the IT department, and Parks and Recreation. Those kind of stuck out to me as some of the more contributing departments to the savings in the expenditure side for the year. As far as salaries and benefits, about $360,000 or so savings with the, between salaries and benefits, and mostly from open positions in public safety and landscaping. There was across-the-board savings with a change in the health care plan for the year also. As far as all of the operating lines, there's about 800 operating line items, savings of about $423,000. And some of the categories that kind of stood out were professional services, service contracts, computer and phone maintenance, and garbage collection. And then just a little bit on the savings on the capital side, a few line items for capital equipment are buried within the operating budget in police and fire. I mean, fire and recreation had some savings, they didn't spend their line items completely for the year. Looking at the operations in the cash basis, and also considering the accruals, the total estimated revenues would be about $32.458 million. Expenditures would be about $31.5. So there'd be a gap of about $910,000. So that's the, on a conservative basis, that's where we think the surplus will be for fiscal year 2013. That surplus number as a percentage of the operating revenues for the year is just under 3%, which is consistent with where we've been many, many past years. Sales tax fund is our capital projects fund on a cash basis. We ended the year at $4.3 million total, and this is typical of the revenue for that fund. The majority of that's the 1% of sales tax money coming back from the state each year. And $3 million in projects were spent on a cash basis, and those are detailed in the monthly operating reports that you have before you. We believe there will be at least another $500,000 in accruals. Most of that will be for projects associated with the schools that haven't been billed yet. So the revenues will come in higher than expenditures for the sales tax fund. For the audit report, it's all combined, so everything combined, we began the year at $27.8 million, and it's broken down by these categories of fund balance. These are the GASB categories up here, Government Accounting Standards, where it tells us what we have to assign different purposes for the parts of the surplus. But the beginning fund balance of $27.8 million, we'll add the estimated revenues of $36.7 million and take out the total estimated expenditures of $35.1 million. Fund balance should be somewhere around $29.5 million at the end of the year. Okay? And we'll break that down. The non-spendable will be, that's the two pieces of property the city's holding for resale, and then the assigned capital, assigned part of fund balance will be for capital projects. That'll be the carryover for projects that still need to be completed, most of that school projects. And then the unassigned is the difference there. And that's the most important part that we look at, $25.8 million. That would represent about 79% of the operating revenues for the year, well above the city's reserve policy of 35%. So it was, it was a good year. We'll be working through the accrual period through the end of August. The auditors will be out here in the third week in September to do their work. We'll report to the Finance and Audit Committee the first part of December, and then report back to City Council at the December City Council meeting with a detailed report. Okay? And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Phil. Let me go to council for any questions or comments.
Mr. Serra, on the operating side, it was about $900,000 difference between expenses and revenues.
Yes.
When we did the budget for this past year, we, as far as I recall, budgeted $200,000 or $300,000.
$213,000.
$213,000 to be brought from reserves to help balance the budget. So the improvement over what we were expecting was really about 1.1 million?
1.1, 1.2 million, yes.
I think in current climate, it's a terrific testimony to all city staff doing a wonderful job in keeping costs reasonable and being good stewards of the community's resources. And I think they should all be commended for that.
Graphically, you can see it right there. The red lines, that much below where the budgeted expenditures were.
Scott? Phil? Phil, thank you, but I think I'll follow up on Paul's comments and thank Jack and all the staff for, you know, being very diligent and having very sharp pencils. And Phil, you oversee it all, so thank you. It's, I think many, many communities would like to be in our position, so thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
The next report is the supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 13, proposed resolution 13-11. I should have told you just to stay there, Phil, I'm sorry. This is, go ahead.
This, I stood before you last month with supplemental appropriations, and about two days after that meeting, a grant was approved, and so we need to appropriate that back to FY13 for the local law enforcement block grant fund. The grant was for $2,760,000. The grant was for $2,760,000 total dollars of spending. It was a 10% city match, it was matched with police funding. The money was used for exercise equipment, batteries for radios, alcohol breath sensors, ceiling fan and heater for the shooting range. So with that, we ask you to approve this resolution so we can appropriate the funding officially.
Any questions, discussion?
Extra money's always good.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution 13-11. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Meechan?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frithen?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Final city manager report, it's a regional stormwater management program memorandum of agreement. Sir, welcome.
Aaron Small will give the report. Aaron Small, city engineer. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a, before you today is a, really it's just a renewal of an agreement that's been in place for 10 years since we've had our municipal separate stormwater permit issued, you know, by the state as required by the Clean Water Act. Just to highlight a few of the minor changes, really what the purpose of this memorandum of agreement with the HRPDC, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, is to have them help us provide a lot of the information that they do for us to meet our permit requirements. Just to highlight some of those services that they provide, they are involved in about 15 of the 46 required tasks for our permit, and those 15 elements are pretty common to all the other member localities that use their services. They help advocate for the region, the overall region at the federal and state level. They provide our technical resources and assistance with all kinds of stormwater issues. They help make sure that I'm up to date on all the federal changes and constant regulatory changes at the state. They also research and provide us grant opportunities. They provide public education for overall stormwater issues and illicit discharge education. They also advertise and encourage public outreach efforts at the regional and the local level. They provide those materials that we provide for those local outreach efforts, and they also provide training in stormwater and erosion sediment control issues to city personnel. They provide tools to aid us in tracking our stormwater BMPs, and they also compile and distribute data that we use in our annual reporting requirements. So they perform a lot of duties for us, and actually for very inexpensive rate, and I believe our rate has actually decreased this year from our previous, last year's requirement. The changes that are occurring over this next five-year period are pretty simple, not a lot of real major changes. The biggest one is they added two localities. We're now up to 18 localities that'll be a member of the agreement. They've added Franklin and Southampton County because they're required to have a stormwater permit and comply with the new stormwater regulations beginning next year. They also removed references from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, who previously administered the program, and replaced it with the Department of Environmental Quality, who just took over the program July 1st. They've also changed some references from HR Storm to AskHRGreen.org, which is the new, it's the revamped Consolidated Public Relations and Public Involvement Program, and it's very consolidated. It also includes our sewer and recycling efforts. Many of our green programs fall under its overall regional coverage. And then the other things that have changed were some minor housekeeping changes, simplifying acronyms, those kind of things, extending dates, and then finally, they simplified the overall organizational structure and procedures by removing a lot of redundant language. It took the overall memorandum from 12 pages down to about eight. So it did make a lot to cut some of the bureaucracy, I think. And with that, we ask that city council authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of agreement between the city of Williamsburg and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission for and continue and amend our regional stormwater programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me see if there are any questions, council, any questions?
Mr. Small, this is the same memorandum of agreement that would be signed by the other 17 localities?
It's the exact same memorandum of agreement, yes.
And I guess, I'll come back to you in a minute. I need to think about how to pose a question.
Any questions, don't?
May not take long to get back to Paul. I don't know. You want me to do something else?
To what degree do all the signatories have input in the memorandum? How do you coordinate something that applies to 18 different members of a constituency like that and still have it work for everybody?
Well, a lot of it is, I mentioned, they simplified the structure, and really that's what it comes down to, to help everybody agree. They took out a lot of this extra language in there that kind of described who was the policymaking body of the HRPDC, when it really comes down to the policymaking bodies, the local governments themselves. So they struggle out a lot of languages. So to get everybody to agree, you keep it simple, and that's what this agreement really does.
And just to add to that, when these agreements are initially done, they take a tremendous amount of time, because all of the city and county attorneys review them, the staff, it's back and forth. Sometimes it goes on for months and months and months for just that reason. It's often difficult to get it all, but once it's done, then maintaining it is not too difficult, or not that time-consuming, but initially, yeah, takes a lot of time.
Yeah, this is substantially the same agreement that was agreed upon 10 years ago.
I see no need to overcomplicate things from our end.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement between the city of Williamsburg and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, continuing the amending and amending the Hampton Roads Regional Stormwater Management Plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Meechan?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frithen?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Small, thank you again for that. City attorney reports, I believe we have none?
I have none.
Thank you. No unfinished business. That brings us to our penultimate agenda item, which is new business planning report. Frithen, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. Page Street Associates proposes to construct a convenience store at 401 Page Street, which is at the intersection of Page and Second Street. The proposed building would replace the existing service station as shown on this survey. This is the proposed site plan for the new convenience store. The site plan request was approved by the Plan Commission on June 19th by a 4 to 0 vote, contingent upon city council approving landscape and slope waivers for the project. The waivers require city council action because the Virginia Supreme Court on January 13th, 2012, issued a decision that any kind of waiver or modification is a legislative act and cannot be approved by the Planning Commission. I would note that the Plan Commission is considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance next week that would allow staff to approve minor waivers. The first waiver request is to allow the placement of parking within the 15-foot landscape area. The proposed redevelopment plan eliminates one of the entrances, removes additional pavement from the right-of-way, and creates a landscape strip with an average five-foot width. This provides 660 square feet of landscape along the right-of-way. The existing site plan does not have any landscaping in this area. And this is what's proposed, and I'll go back to what's there now. This is the edge of the right-of-way here, so as you can see, only landscaping in the front is actually on the city's right-of-way. There's none on the property. However, the proposed plan does provide some landscaping on their property and then beefs up what's in the city's right-of-way and eliminates an entrance that's right in this area. The second waiver is a slope waiver. Currently, there is drainage that goes underneath the building towards the back of the lot, and this proposal redirects it around the building, and this will impact approximately 1,000 square feet of slopes that exceed 30% in the back. This is along the Pine Crest subdivision, and the waiver request states that the redesign will provide for flatter site grades and additional ground cover, which should improve the existing condition. The Architecture Review Board approved the final building elevations and materials on May 14th, and Plan Commission on June 19th by a 4 to 0 vote recommended to city council that waivers to reduce the required 15-foot landscape strip along the right-of-way and to allow construction on slopes greater than 30% be approved as shown in the site plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions, council.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Rhodes, could you just show me where the placement of the parking is within the 15-foot landscaped area?
There are four spaces right along here that are parallel spaces.
So they're underneath the tree canopy?
Yes, sir.
And so that's why they don't show on the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I was looking at the images, I was having a hard time seeing it. Thank you. And so are those parallel or they?
These are four parallel spaces.
Okay.
Scott?
Mr. Rhodes, will the eliminated curb cut be repaired to a normal gutter with a curb?
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the slope waiver. The drainage is going to improve, you said. How? I mean, the idea is to keep the stuff from going into Chesapeake Bay, so how are they going to improve that?
Well, this area right now is very steep. It drops off behind the existing building. This doesn't really.
No, I've been there. I, yeah.
So the proposal will flatten those slopes a little bit, so it'll be a little bit more gradual.
So that'll allow the water to seep in fat more?
Yeah.
That's the, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll make a comment. I have more questions from Mr. Rhodes. I just think that this seems to provide a vast improvement over what is currently on the site. And when you look at the, how extensive the landscaping appears to be in this new plan compared to what's currently there, I think it's head and shoulders above the existing situation. On potentially difficult site with that corner location, and it's just going to be one more step in improving an important intersection on an entrance corridor to the city where private owners have already invested significant amounts of money on the residential side just across the street from that, some of the businesses down the street. We know about a project that's underway, and some have taken place over the last few years, and then the city investing the money in undergrounding the wiring there. I mean, I think this all comes together very nicely, and it all makes a great deal of sense to me.
No, I echo that. I'm particularly pleased because I do think the lot is challenged with size and setbacks to have somebody come forward, the owner to come forward, be able to develop it and find a tenant, so it's good.
And I think it's a big plus for Pine Crest and the Capital Avenue Road neighborhoods too, because it provides, you know, a convenience store that's walkable from a number of residents, for a number of residents in the city, and that's a plus. So I see many things to like about this. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve the proposed landscape and slope waivers as recommended by Planning Commission and as shown on the site plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Meechan?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frithen?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Before we go to our last agenda item for the day, which is open forum, I'll again remind everyone of the special meeting of city council on Monday, July 29th at 7:00 here in the council chambers. And again, the purpose of that meeting is to receive the report of the review committee established under the PPEA process for the Striker Center, and again, remind people that a discussion of that will follow at the work session on August 5th. With that, I'll...
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one more little item of new business? Just as we sat down, we were handed a copy of a letter from the EPA, which says that the city has done everything it's supposed to do, and I just would like to say thank you to the staff because I suspect this was not easy. I filled out a few of these kinds of things.
There was a lot of paperwork to be done, answering all of the questions. Did you recall this one from around four months ago or so where we got that notification?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's nice when they write you and tell you, we're done with you.
Yeah.
So I hope you'll give staff, and particularly everyone who put many hours into this.
I will, and thank you for bringing it up.
A thank you for the council.
So everyone here can hear that. Thank you.
With that, we'll go to open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address city council on any matter may do so. If you wish to, please come forward and state your name and address. Sabrina, welcome.
Sorry to get here earlier enough to hand these to you. Good afternoon. My name is Sabrina Fairbanks, and I'm a property owner at 201 Carey Street. As council knows, because I was here last year, I've been working on parking on Carey Street and the adjacent area, and it seemed, you know, started because my tenants never seemed to have any place to park. At the end of last year, council helped with some of that by implementing, reducing the number of guest passes, which is going to go into effect August this coming school year, and also gave the city the ability to revoke some passes which are being improperly used. As the school year progressed, and after Mr. Clayton gave us a few more sections of yellow decal resident parking, which I was completely thrilled about, it turned out that we still didn't have enough parking. And what happened, and what is outlined on your packet I just gave you, that there are six streets that have a yellow decal. And it turns out that at least 22, actually there's 24, but I don't have those last two cars. On your very last page, I have a list of these vehicles that are residents of other Carey Street, or other yellow decal streets, but they park on Carey Street for the purposes of a shorter walk to William &amp; Mary every day the entire school year. So I'm here to request that Carey Street get its own color, just for, you know, the city has gone above and beyond by trying to give us more parking. The police have warned, have repeatedly ticketed. Landlords have given copies of the code section, which requires them to park at their address. It's not working. Property managers, they just keep coming back day after day. It's a cumbersome process to try to figure out who all of these yellow decal people are, so the only department that knows who this particular decal 003 would go to, you have to call the finance department, and they're very busy with the city's financial business. You have to call them and say, you know, which vehicle, where does this vehicle reside, and where should they be parking? After, and then they'll tell you, and then you can call the police. But if it's after 4:30 and the finance department is closed, then the police have no way of knowing if that's a legitimate Carey Street vehicle, because it just has a yellow decal. So it's a very cumbersome process to even find out who they are, where they should be parking, and it's, oh, what's the word I'm searching for? I just think there's lots of ambiguity for the police because we call, citizens can call, but they don't really know, you know, that it's not a non-Carey Street decal, as I call them. And it just seems to me everything's been tried, and they just keep coming back, so I think we're at the point where we need our own color. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Jack, what would be the process for considering this within the city?
Right, well, the decals, and I think we have six or so districts, is that right? There's... There's six, five or six?
Five or six different colored districts around the community, and we're pretty well set up to go for our August timeframe with the color codes that we've got set in place. A lot of changes have been made to try to deal with the Carey Street situation, a lot with Sabrina's help to get the information and do a better job with tracking it, and both with the timing and also some reluctance to start going to buy street colors, and which changes the signage on the streets, that we think the best thing to do is to go with it with the changes that have been made this year, and to see if that does not solve the problem. By the way, having the, the police being able to access that data twenty-four, seven is very easy to do, and we can do that, that's a good suggestion. So that's not a phone call, but, but can get the, where, where does the car get into that database in their cars? So I think that we've got ways of addressing this, I know it's not quite enough to, to this suggestion, but it's-
Just one of my questions is, at what point does having police officers monitoring this, the cost of that outweigh the cost of changing the color on this street?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer it, I mean-
No, I mean, but that's, that's something we, I think we need to think about as we move forward.
Sure, sure. And that's, that is an issue, I'm not sure how, how, how make up an issue.
Now, this, this has the same color as some nearby streets, right?
Yeah, and typically, that's, whole neighborhoods are a single color. It was initially designed to keep people from one part of the city essentially driving to another part and parking there, that have a decal in one part of the city, drive to another part of the city and park there. This situation of someone coming from a block or two away and getting a block closer to campus by moving up to that spot, and, and, so that's, that's why the colors were put in there to the beginning, and it's, it's to not be so restrictive to say that within a given neighborhood, you can't park elsewhere in that neighborhood. And so there's, there's a balance here of how much, how strict to make it and how much that street is open to everyone within that decal area. And granted, as, the case here is whether or not the things that have been put in place will be sufficient to make the parking on that street work, and a lot of changes have been made over the last year, and we won't know for sure till we go through this next semester.
Remind me, if you have a decal, it's really only good for in front of your house or wherever you're, you're living.
Well, it is, you are to park in front of your house, but there are occasions when you, if a space is taken in front of your house, and you, and then you can park legally nearby, but the intention is that you use the decal adjacent to your residence, yes.
And I think in this circumstance, what we find, because of the compact nature of this neighborhood, the style of residents that live there, renters, generally students, I think what she's saying, we're finding more of them shifting their cars to a more convenience place to walk to campus rather than park closer to the house.
Essentially, it's, it's driving a block or two from your house to get a block or two closer to campus is, is the situation, and, and how much of that are we going to continue to see under the, under the regime we've got in place? And the amount of, we've also expanded the amount of decal parking on the street and changes in the signs, so.
If we, and going back to the mayor's question, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, if we wanted to make the change, is that a city manager decision, or does council have to vote on it?
Yeah, let's see, I'm trying to recall if the ordinance specifies those, those zones or not, and Dan is shaking his head no, so that, that it could be done administratively, yes.
And so if August rolls around and get into September, and we see that the changes that have been made are working, then we could consider that, but if we find then that it's not working, we can-
Well, that, yeah, that would take then reissuing, the changing the signs and reissuing decals on that particular street.
But that's a fairly small number of decals in a town.
It, it sounds as though we've got, we're issuing too many decals for the number of parking places that are available.
Well, and also, that has been, the changes you made a few months ago reduces significantly the number of guest passes that we're issuing, and because the guest pass is on top of the permanent decals, what caused the problem.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds to me like, you know, we monitor through, through the fall and then see, see whether the changes that have been made work or not, but if they're, they're not working-
This is another place we can go.
Okay.
And if it still is a real issue, I know it's not the most convenient thing to try to adjust the color of the zone or change the zone borders, but it's something we might want to think about between, around the turn of the year if it's still very difficult.
True, and again, but I, I do caution that you could see everyone wanting their block and their street having a separate color in order to-
There are a lot of colors in that Colonial Williamsburg thing, that's right.
Yeah, and so I, we want, want to be careful in terms of opening up-
I, I understand that, but I also think that as, as, from what I hear, I mean, there are relatively few streets where this is a real issue.
This is, this is a problematic street.
So this is one, and there may be one or two others, but, so I think the idea of, let's monitor during the fall and then see, see where things stand.
Okay.
Sabrina, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, we appreciate that. Anyone else wish to address council in any manner? If not, I see Mickey Shohan here, welcome back to City Council Chambers, we're always glad to have you here, along with former Councilman Braxton as well, so thank you both for being here today. With that, I believe we have something for closed session.
Mr. Mayor? I believe we do. So I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per subparagraf one concerning city manager and city attorney evaluation and compensation and other specific personnel initiatives.
Second.
Matters.
Have a, have a motion and a second, call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Meechan?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frithen?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess.